Call meeting to order, call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas. Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon. Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of, oh, there's no pledge, huh? Yeah, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Why not?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Hearing appeal to the village board regarding revocation of business and tobacco licenses issued to Dwan Hookah Lounge, doing business as Dwan Hookah Lounge, Village of Orland Park Business License BL-23-28304, 9925 143rd Place, Orland Park, Illinois.
Which one do I need to read? Which one do I need to read over here?
You don't need to. Do you want me to open here? Good evening. We are here in the matter of the business license and tobacco licenses issued to Dwan Hookah Lounge Incorporated, DBA Dwan Hookah Lounge, Village of Orland Park Business License This evening, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Representatives for Dwan Hookah Lounge will have 15 minutes, followed by 15 minutes for the village, followed by that, Dwan Hookah will have five minutes for rebuttal. At that point, the board will recess to close session for the purposes of discussing a decision in this matter. Are you ready to proceed?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. For the record, my name is James Hune, H-Y-U-N. I'm the attorney on behalf of Dwan Hookah Lounge. I'm here representing the business as an appellant and the licensee on this matter, based on a decision that was rendered on September 29th by the village manager. As a hearing officer, I submitted a appellate notice of an appeals regarding why it should be reconsidered or it should be reversed, and I'm going to be very brief since I only have 15 minutes. Number one, based on the notes that I've taken and from my recollection, I believe, number one, there has not been a sufficient or substantial evidence in terms of the testimony that was given by one officer, Officer Tyreke Lorick, who was a sole witness in that matter. Basically, they produced one officer as to what happened on May 11th of 2023, which was an incident involving an underage tobacco enforcement agency, they called it the T, who entered the establishment, and what was essential in that testimony was that tobacco was not sold to a minor. Now, when you look at the findings of the, the findings of the hearing officer's order, it says the following, and again, this is the only sole witnesses. The officer testified that he did not know what signs were displayed at that time. Signs meaning no minors to be allowed to be selling any, buying any tobacco products, that they were not over, that the business is not there to sell tobacco products to the minors. So the officer during his investigation never testified whether there were or there was not signs, whereas we produced two witnesses with the photographs, the owners and the, and the, and the, and the manager there that testified that there were signs all over the place. That goes unrebutted. Officer also testified that there was never money that had never changed hands and was never completed. In other words, there was no sales that took place. Now, according to the officer, there's what they call OAF fund, OAF. That means official advance funds. So before the investigation, they would send this minor, they would, they were typically, in a typical sting operation, they would inventory these bills to make sure that a sale took place. When I asked the officer whether any of that money was utilized, they never utilized it. The officer couldn't even remember whether or not, what type of bills were inventoried. There was never, never any reports of any OAF fund that was being utilized during this investigation. Yet, he testified there was OAF fund, but again, there was no sales that took place, not even an attempt of utilization of an OAF fund. Officer also indicated, and it's on the order here, in addition, he does not have personal knowledge that the substance in hookah was tobacco. Now, the whole idea here is that the, that the business was prohibited from selling tobacco to a minor. We testified, now, there was not a sale, the officer does not have any personal knowledge of any tobacco, he does not have any personal knowledge of any tobaccos being sold, and this is based on his own testimony, without even, even considering our witnesses as to what they said. He also inferred that due to the circumstances, that T did not have any physical contact with the tobacco product. Now, I'm reading this literally in black, based on the ordering of the fact, that T did not have, T meaning obviously tobacco enforcement agent, which is the minor, he does not, he had no physical contact with tobacco product. Now, my client here as an owner is being charged, is, was being cited and, and is, has, his business license revoked based on these allegations, whereas the finding of fact here in their own words, there was never a sale that took place, there was never an OAF fund that was made, the minor never had a contact with any tobacco product, so how do we get from the finding to the revocation? I mean, for any crime, for any punishment, there has to be a support of some finding of fact, but the finding of fact in black and white is clear. It, it goes uncontradicted in the, in the findings of the hearing order. Now, officer could not remember any signs, but we produce photographs of signs all throughout the store, even on the menu, that says that we are not, we are prohibited from selling any tobacco products to a minor. How much more clear, as you walk in, there are signs. Now, I wish we would not have come to this situation here, but the sole testimony of Officer Lorick is insufficient here to warrant a violation, let alone a revocation of a business license. That is just, doesn't right. Now, just, I know that also that the, as a part of the order, they mentioned this last chance order. On August of 2022, the business was cited for selling, selling a tobacco product to a minor, and they were given one year last chance. Now, let me give you the circumstances. At that time, by the way, my client was not the majority owner of that business, he was not aware of that order. He testified to that effect. The circumstances was they had a employee working there, or independent contractor who wasn't training. A T, a minor walked in, asked for a cigarette. This business does not sell cigarettes. This business, so what he has, we don't have cigarettes. And what he did was, he goes, well, can you, can I have, do you have any cigarettes? And guy goes, yeah, here it is, this is my own personal cigarette. No money exchanged, it was a personal favor. It was not a sale, but I don't want to kind of cry over the spill of milk here because that case is over. But again, I just want to put in context here, this is not a business where they're trying to intentionally violate, or there is some scheme to violate any laws here. And I'll go over the background of Mr. Hurani, who was a very honorable, honorable man in his community to some effect, but again, I just, and that happened in, that happened in August of, of 2020, I mean, August of 2022. So, right before the expiration, this took place. So I just want to keep, again, not to undermine, not to condone anything that happened, I'm just saying in the context that that particular incident was based on a, an action by someone who's working there, just giving out, here's a cigarette, you want a cigarette, here it is, buy, okay? That's what happened. Now, obviously, they paid money for that, they paid, and there were, they, 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 they received a penalty as a result of that, that's the last chance order. Now, again, the act on that incident was a personal favor by an independent contractor, rather than any of the owners that was trying to be intentionally in violation of, of the law. Okay, let's assume that there is a technical violation regarding this incident, okay? Let's assume that they were selling tobacco, even though record does not show such. The only evidence that we have here is a showing of an hookah apparatus. That's the substantial step in which the, the city is relying on to revoke their licenses. Let's assume that there is a violation. Revocation is a disproportionate sentence for something like this. My client has invested a lot of money into this, and I know that economic hardship may not be a sole issue, he's got a lease that runs till for the next five years, that pays $3,000 a month. His brother owns buildings in Orland Park. He is an annual charitable donor to St. Jude Hospital and to American Lung Association. He's a very honorable man. He owns a couple of shark, a couple of, what is it, shark, shark fish restaurant. He's a very honorable man. He is not, and also, this place, from what I've been told, is in a historical area, and it attracts a lot of cultural value to the community in terms of Middle Eastern community. And again, let's assume that there is a technical violation. This is not an intentional act to, to defraud the city here, this is not something where they're trying to sell it to make a lot of money, this is, again, the first incident regarding 2022 was a, a guy, a, a, a minor comes in, we don't sell cigarettes, but here's my cigarette, here's a Marlboro Light, here, 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 take one, buy, okay? Second one, again, the finding of the fact says there is no sale. This is, they, they don't, they, they, the officer never testified there were no signs. Rather than a punitive approach to this violation, I propose a more balanced and perhaps maybe rehabilitative approach? There are a lot of powers you as a trustee have in terms of what kind of, what kind of a sentence would be appropriate. Why go from this violation to shutting the business down? There is other measures, suspension, for temporary suspension, six months, three months, a year? Let him pay a fine, let him go through some counseling, go to see what is a proper way to conduct this business. Again, this place, from what I've been told, it's not some, you got some people who's, who's doing illegal substances coming into the store, they have white collar, hardworking doctors, firemen, that's coming all over to enjoy the hookah lounge. This is what this business is all about. It is not a, it is, it is not a business in which attracts criminals, it is not a business in which it encourages illegal drug activity, it's in fact completely the opposite. In a diverse society that we live in, this business is growing every single year, every single year. But again, based on, let's say, assuming a technical violation, why revoke this man's license? How long have you been in that business?
2013.
Yeah, since 2013, 2013, for over 10 years. Again, what I'm suggesting is a more balanced and rehabilitative approach to address this issue, perhaps on the finding another, to have them in being fully compliant, maybe having a full-time manager there, I know this is not a big store, requirements of a proper training by a certain accredited agency, but to have these people revoke their license from these actions, again, I am not condoning what they did was right, but again, this is a technical violation, if it, if it is a violation. But the finding of the fact, and I'm, unfortunately, I'm a lawyer here, and I have to look at things technically from the legal technical view here, even the, their own findings here does not support a finding of liable, a finding of revocation. No personal knowledge of tobacco, they did not have personal knowledge whether there were signs. In fact, when I asked them about the menus, what it says, the officer had no recollection. Officer had no recor, money never exchanged, OEM funds never been property, so what do we have here? Now, I've been a lawyer for 33 years, I teach criminal law at Northwestern Law School, I, I believe based on my case, case law findings here, that the sentence here is absolutely disproportionate to the action here. It is, it is, and I, and just from the, the common sense and from the morality point of view, to shut these people down after 10 years over this, and I think would be very unjust. As I've mentioned, the business, rather than allowing minors to buy these products, they actually trying to prevent the minors from selling these tobacco products, they have signs all over the place, they give, they give proper training, unfortunately, you can't control everything of what the employees do. This employee was fired that day, that particular day, upon learning of what happened. He was fired immediately, there, there's a zero tolerance for that. These signs that they have in the store, which is located throughout, is not only a reminder to the customer that, that the minors cannot buy tobacco or tobacco products, but it's a reminder to the employee that they cannot sell or even attempt to sell these products. And I believe the, the character of my client is very important, as mentioned, he's 48 years of old, and he's got four children, he's very respected, he is very giving in terms of the charity during Thanksgiving and Christmas, he's got friends in the law enforcement, he holds, his family holds a shark, fish and chicken in, in many different places, and again, he considers this business to be like a cultural center to that some in fact. So, thank you. I don't want to hold up any more time, but that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. On September 20th, 2023, the village manager presided over a hearing regarding the status of the business license of Dwan Hookah Lounge located at 9925 West 143rd Place. The notice of hearing alleged two violations of village code. The basis of those two counts was the delivery of tobacco to a minor. The delivery occurred on May 11th, 2023, during a period of time that Dwan was operating under a last chance order that was the result of a hearing on previous violations of village code. On September 29th, the hearing officer found that Dwan Hookah Lounge was in violation of village code as alleged in the notice of hearing, and ordered a revocation of their business license. Multiple times throughout the year, Orland Park Police Officers conduct compliance checks on businesses within the village that sell tobacco. The purchases are conducted by the Orland Park Police Department in a covert capacity with the aid of individuals under the age of 21 years who are employed as tobacco enforcement agents or TEAs. At the hearing, Orland Park Police Officer Tyler Lorick testified that on May 11th, 2023, he was conducting tobacco compliance checks with a 17-year-old TEA. Officer Lorick was also working in an undercover capacity that day. He and the TEA entered Dwan, sat down, were given menus by an employee of the business. The TEA ordered a grape hookah, and the clerk delivered the hookah to the seating area and began preparing, by preparing it by heating the tobacco. The clerk never asked the TEA or Officer Lorick to produce age-appropriate identification prior to delivering the tobacco. Officer Lorick informed the clerk that he was a police officer and that the clerk had just served a minor. At that point, Officer Lorick's partner, Officer Livingston, entered Dwan and issued an MV citation for tobacco sale to a minor. Dwan Hookah Lounge holds a business license from the village as well as a Class B tobacco license, meaning that they are a tobacco store as defined under the code. Their primary and only function is the sale of hookah and tobacco. The central focus of their business is the sale of products that cannot be purchased by anyone under the age of 21. In their statement on appeal, Dwan argues that there was a lack of substantial evidence to prove a sale occurred, that the last chance order the business was operating under was the result of an underage sale that also was not a sale of tobacco, and that revocation of the business license is too harsh a punishment given these circumstances. Addressing first, the lack of substantial evidence, Dwan insists that the TEA was not sold tobacco, one, because the hookah apparatus that was delivered to the TEA is in and of itself not tobacco, and two, because no money was exchanged. The owner of Dwan, as well as a manager, testified that a hookah smoking device contains tobacco within it, so the delivery consisted of tobacco plus a hookah device. In this instance, the hookah device was delivered to the TEA's seating area, and Officer Lorick stopped the clerk as he was beginning to light it up and heat the tobacco. The tobacco was not fully prepared for smoking, but to mandate that the tobacco must be fully ready to be inhaled to be considered delivered is, as the hearing officer stated in his order, nonsensical. It would be the equivalent of not finding a violation of the code because a business delivered a sealed pack of cigarettes to a teenager. Additionally, although there were official advance funds provided to the TEA, the Dwan employee did not ask for payment prior to bringing the tobacco, so in this instance, no money was exchanged. However, the village code section that was violated is Section 7-15-7 and is titled "Prohibited Sales Delivery." It states that it is unlawful for the licensee to sell, offer for sale, give away, or deliver tobacco to anyone under the age of 21 years. The code does not require that an exchange of money must occur in order for there to be a violation. Under these facts and circumstances, I submit to you that an underage delivery of tobacco occurred on May 11th. Dwan also states that there were signs posted at the business warning that customers must be 21 years old, but the posted signage does not negate the business's obligation to ask for proper identification and ensure that its customers are of legal age. Despite the signage everywhere, it was not effective enough to present this incident. Regarding the last chance order, Dwan argues that the last chance order was issued after the business was found to be in violation of delivering tobacco when an employee handed over a personal cigarette to a minor without any exchange of money. This assertion is not accurate, and with all due respect to counsel, I want to set the record straight. The last chance order was issued after six violations of village code were found to have occurred, one of which dealt with the underage delivery of tobacco. In that instance, it was not a cigarette belonging to the employee, but a tin of flavored hookah tobacco belonging to the business. In that prior incident, an undercover Orland Park Police Officer and a 17-year-old TEA entered Dwan. The TEA asked to purchase strawberry-flavored hookah tobacco to go. The employee prepared a tin of tobacco, handed it to the minor, and when the TEA attempted to pay, the employee said there was no charge. The other violations contained in the last chance order included excessive garbage and rubbish in the rear yard of the business, a rear accessory structure that was in significant disrepair and falling down, as well as disrepair of the exterior trim and decorative features. Additionally, the business was found to be selling blended coffee, smoothies and other drinks. The village code section that authorizes indoor smoking at Dwan specifically prohibits the business's sale of any items other than smoking products and equipment. Finally, and most importantly, Dwan was found to be operating without having first obtained a certificate of occupancy. The business was stickered and closed by code enforcement and the Orland Park Fire Department. On two occasions in the days after being stickered, closed for no occupancy, the business was found to be occupied. The last chance order was issued on a multitude of violations, not just one underage delivery of tobacco. The last chance order was issued on June 10th, 2022, and clearly states that any additional violations of village code or any state laws within the 365 days following its issuance will result in the license revocation. It could not be more clear. Dwan asserts that there should be a more balanced and rehabilitative approach to this violation, and suggests that a fine, warnings, a probationary period, and a suspension for a period of time would be more appropriate. They assert that if the village utilizes these measures, it would allow Dwan to rectify its mistake. But the truth is, the village has previously imposed fines, given a probationary period, and mandated a suspension with Dwan. It did so in June of 2022. In the last chance order, Dwan was fined $1,000, was put on probation for one year, and the license was suspended for 30 days. And yet, here we are. The issue this board is to decide is whether the hearing officer's decision to revoke Dwan's business license was against the manifest weight of the evidence, which means that the board should not overturn the hearing officer's order unless you find that his decision was obviously erroneous or somehow unsupported by the evidence that was presented. The order issued by the hearing officer revoking the business license of Dwan Hookah Lounge was the result of careful consideration of all the testimony and evidence. I submit to you that the finding and the penalty imposed are not against the manifest weight of the evidence, and I ask that you uphold the revocation. Thank you.
I don't have any personal knowledge about the last chance order, other than the fact that it exists, which we do not argue what we stipulate, right, I believe in ourselves, and we do not disagree with the fact that the such order having has existed. From what I understand, however, this is the first time I'm hearing of anything else other than a cigarette that was tendered to the minor without any sale. Again, the council does not argue that there was never a sale in that order, but I'll, I'll, I'll stick to the following argument. The council gave out a nice, Ms. Norton gave out an argument regarding, about the facts of this case, but the finding here, the order here, as laid out by the hearing officer, is clear. That's the finding of fact here, and I'm going to read it as my, as my final rebuttal. It says, the officer did not know what signs were displayed at the time, because he did not look at the store after this incident to see if there were any signs. He clarified that money had never changed hands and sale was never completed. In addition, he does not have personal knowledge that the substance in the hookah was tobacco. He also inferred that due to the circumstances, in addition, he did not have any physical contact with the tobacco product. I mean, the record speaks for itself, and I'm reading it in black and white here, I'm not paraphrasing it, it speaks for itself. That in itself is not substantial enough to, 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 to find my client in any violation. That's technical, and you have to have a certain amount of evidence of, number one, certain sale or any attempt thereof. Number two, there has to be certain evidence of tobacco. The apparatus of hookah in and of itself is not a tobacco. And number three is that these monies, and we know that the money was never exchanged because the OEM funds, as testified by Officer Lorick, was never utilized or inventoried. That's the fact, and that's the record. And again, I am saying that the, the evidence, as you see it from the findings of an order here, speaks for itself, and I believe that based on this letter of this order, it is far insufficient to find my client in violation of any. Now, again, going back to my second argument, even if there is a technical violation, despite the fact that there was a last chance order, being in the business for 10 years, being this significant, there are alternative ways. This is not either revocation, get out, or to the business. There are, all of you have the powers to discuss and decide what would be an appropriate, you are not confined to accepting the revocation. Again, we have an honorable man, that's all I'm saying. So again, legally, the, the order here is insufficient. Number two, there is an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any public comments? Trustee Compass.
Move to go into executive session to consider evidence or testimony presented in open hearing to a quasi-adjudicative body, provided that the body prepares and makes available for public inspection, a written decision setting forth its determinative reasoning.
Second.
Call the roll. Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Louis.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here. So my comments here are really brief. Just to be advised that we affirmed the hearing officer's decision, that his decision was not against the manifest weight of the evidence, and a written order will be delivered within 10 days. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Does anyone want to go right into the cow?
No, I gotta grab my gear.
Okay, well, we'll get, we'll go in five minutes. Give him a chance to get his gear.